January 18th, 2022, Board of Education later meeting at 7:00 P. M. Sarah, good evening to you. And then early happy birthday to you, Sarah. Happy birthday. United States, I will call this.
Mr. Burri?
Here.
Mrs. Beck?
Here.
Mrs. Law?
Here.
Mr. Mazan?
Here.
Mr. Monson?
Sure.
Mr. Colas?
Here.
Mr. Chudusia?
Here.
Okay, thank you. Corner of the statue. Please stand in place. I would like to complete the prayer in the United States of America, and to your mother, which stands on the nation, under God, and in this law, with their reading justice as well. Mr. Burri? This is me, the mission statement, sir.
Sure. The mission of Norwich School District 80 is inspiring educational excellence in a nurturing environment.
Thank you, sir. Celebrate the creation of success. Is there anything anyone would like to say?
Yeah. Kind of starts off. Um, it was nice over winter break and actually somebody kind of kicked us off. Uh, the principals of Giles, Lee, Mr. Beakie, and Dr. Ragnow. We had a meeting with Special Olympics Illinois, um, time to talk about some of the offerings that they have for students, uh, in our, in our district. So we just kind of have an exciting announcement to make. So I'll try to, Mr. Beakie, uh, Dr. Ragnow.
So we are excited to announce that both Giles and Lee Schools are unified school districts for Illinois Special Olympics. So each building received, uh, this banner along with a bunch of other, uh, materials, uh, consensos, also some, uh, things that we can use for our instruction. Uh, I know over here you received a whole big bucket of-
Different books that we can use as read alouds. That's what was, uh, the topic of inclusion and recognizing differences.
Yeah, so we're going to talk a little more during our, our building report about this, uh, as well, but we just, we wanted to share this and we're excited about this.
Okay, awesome, thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you for that. Moving on to our action. I'd ask the board to consider the approval of the agenda as presented or potentially by. Any discussion from the board? Okay, well, as for motion to approve the agenda as presented. A motion, sorry. Frank, Renzo? Uh, Sarah, who called please?
Mr. Burri?
Yes.
Mr. Chudusia?
Yes.
Mr. Monson?
Yeah.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Colas?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Mazan?
Yeah.
Okay, motion, Chris. Again, we recognize our visitors tonight. Thank you for being with us. Correspondents. There is no correspondence to report on the districts on. Call participation. Ms. Mazan is checking that for us right now. I don't know. Um, yeah, two? Okay. Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Mazan. Thank you.
At each regular or special meeting which is open to the public, the Illinois School Board of Policy require that members of the public and the board's employees be afforded time to comment or ask questions. The board's agenda designates this portion of the meeting to recognize those visitors and provide an opportunity for comments or to ask questions. The board asks that speakers identify themselves and limit comments or questions to no more than five minutes. The five minutes may be shortened if the present must conserve time to give the maximum number of individuals an opportunity to speak. Speakers are reminded to conduct themselves with respect and civility towards others. The board also requests that speakers refrain from identifying individual students or staff. Speakers who choose to identify specific students or staff do so at their own risk. Please keep in mind that the opportunity to engage in public comment at a school board meeting does not insulate speakers from libel or violation of privacy. Lastly, if some, someone wishes to present an unresolved complaint to the board, the board requests that you contact Mr. Bren. Thank you, and the board now looks forward to your comments and questions.
Yeah, first sign of tonight. Thank you, Renzo. It's Frank, on you.
Thank you very much. Uh, first, I'd like to say thank you, everyone here for your involvement in the community. Um, obviously, it took a lot of time to put in, uh, you know, it's, uh, it's well worth it for, for our children and their whales for their participation in here this evening and giving up your time to, um, to be here. So, um, just want to let everybody know, uh, I'm not sure if you've seen circulated, uh, social media, is the Norwich Kindness Day. Uh, it's an effort that, uh, was started by, uh, Fred Rindstein, um, and now has involved, uh, your esteemed colleague, Ms. Mazan, myself, and Jen, Jen Ames. And, uh, we are a, obviously, a volunteer group to, uh, bring a kindness act on a particular day and bring together, uh, various boards and groups and organizations in our community, you know, so we can showcase it as one giant act of kindness where we're all working together. Um, we asked that the, uh, that District 80 be involved. What we have been speaking to other boards and, and groups about is saying, what, if you could, would like to be involved, uh, on April 23rd, uh, what you're comfortable with. If you're comfortable with saying, you know, for instance, uh, you know, we have Girl Scouts that are going to be, uh, helping, uh, clean up the, uh, the neighborhood, you know, the village life cleanup ethic. They're going to join that. Something really, you know, easy. Uh, other ideas have been floated, um, assembling a free library outside the village hall. That's another easy one. But, uh, if there's anything that you would like to participate, please let us know, and we can help coordinate that. We can help bring volunteers, uh, bring light to it, um, anything that we can do to show that this community, our main focus is kindness, uh, and giving back, and we want to showcase that in a day where all groups, all organizations, all left bodies come together. And so, we've spoken to the, uh, to the school board, uh, we've spoken to the fire district, we've spoken to the PTAs, uh, a lot of people, and, you know, we had, uh, the time to get in front of them, and now we want to get in front of you folks and see if, uh, if we could, uh, if you guys would like to participate and what you guys would like to do. We're asking, you know, from the Ask the C V, we'll just bring it up. So, thank you very much for your time. Any questions?
Board? Awesome, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Tommy, I don't want to missing out on your last one.
Oh, I said, oh.
Oh, so now we only have one to sign in tonight for public, that's right? And-
I'm sorry, can you talk about signing?
Yeah, do you want to sign in for public participation?
We're from the side of the-
I have the sheet, I can bring it to you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Got a problem? That, that's the second one, Steve? Yes. Okay, Bonnie, you're up?
I just want to ask, um, I just want to ask, um, just maybe, what, um, as, as these guys like to change with respect to COVID, I just want to help them understand, um, what is the decision-making process? How can you communicate better with parents? I know that this is talking about Community Committee, met many months back, but it really hasn't done anything since then. I don't know, like, I should be directing my comments in terms of the board education? Should I just look at administration? I just want to understand what are the processes?
You want to take that off? Yeah, that's probably what we're going to talk about in my report. Do you want me to do that now? Um, yeah, well, Mr. Bren was going to touch on that, Bonnie, his report. Uh, you can touch on it now, but one, one of the things you said is, can you reach out to the board? You can always reach out to the board. If you find, uh, you're reaching out and maybe you kind of get a roadblock or something, we do have a board about email. You can send us an email, uh, and then, you know, we can help facilitate maybe something, but go ahead, we'll touch on that a little bit now.
Sure. So, we're going to talk about this during my report. We are, um, you know, we, we're still in the middle of the pandemic, and, you know, my interest and my position in trying to deal with that, uh, has been very, very consistent, and, and frankly, it's going to continue to be consistent. I recognize that this community wants their kids in school, and, you know, that has been our, our priority. We operate on that assumption. But I've said all along, I would continue to say that we're going to do this in the safest manner possible. I have one goal, and that is to make sure that all of our children and our staff return home at end of every day safe and healthy, uh, to the extent that we can. And, and I think our, our wider school community and our school community has done an amazing job, uh, handling the mitigations that we have put out there, uh, and dealing with the confusing and conflicting guidance that comes from all of the different agencies. It's very, very difficult, right, how to keep kids in school. We had, Mrs. Chudusia, 17 people out one day last week?
Staff, correct.
We had 17 staff out on one day last week, and it wasn't because, it was because of the rest of our teachers stepping up and filling in that we've been able to, uh, staff the building in what I consider a safe manner. Now, with regard to the changes that have come out, uh, we're not under the auspices of the Centers for Disease Control. Uh, they make their decisions based on what they think is necessary and, and important, and more power to them. Uh, we're under the guidance of the Cook County Department of Public Health, the Illinois Department of Public Health, most notably, the Illinois State Board of Education. Where we found ourselves last week was dealing with the CDC changing their guidance, not having clear direction from Cook County Department of Public Health. We had a message from the Illinois Department of Public Health saying that ISB was going to approve the changes three or four days, if not five days, before ISB finally came out and said, "We authorize you to adopt these changes," uh, in terms of quarantine and isolation. And so, we're under the guidance of the Illinois State Board of Ed, like I said, the Cook County Department of Public Health, uh, and, you know, until we got the go-ahead from them, we did not complete our work to implement those changes. We had had conversations a couple of times last week with the administrative team. We were, we had a robust conversation about moving forward without the blessing of the State Board, uh, and we had a plan in place to do that, uh, but that same afternoon, we had that conversation at about four or 4:30, ISB came out and said, "Here, we, we adopt these changes."
8:15.
Yeah, it was 8:15, it was later.
And then even.
At that point in time, we had a considerable number of students on our list with differing dates to return from quarantine and/or isolation, and quite frankly, it took a little bit of time to go through and recalculate what those return dates would be, given the new guidance. That brought us up to, I believe, Friday, and we knew that we had yesterday off, so we made the decision that we would begin to follow the new guidance today. I know some, some schools jumped the gun and took it upon themselves to make those changes without the blessing of the Illinois State Board. That's fine for that. I'm not comfortable doing that because of several different reasons, most notably, it still puts us in a, in a liability situation, and quite frankly, I'm not willing to put all of you in. We move as quickly as we can, uh, I believe. Some can disagree with that, and that's fine. We communicate, uh, as quickly as we can. What's frustrating is the guidance comes out on Thursday night at eight o'clock. We get an update the next day. We get a governor's executive order, uh, Monday?
11:00.
And that's not particularly the guidance that came out from the Illinois Department of Public Health. And so, my position is, I would rather put out guidance that I'm reasonably confident is correct and accurate, rather than put out two or three things, because the message that we get from a lot of different agencies changes so quickly. That's the best explanation I can give. We're doing the best that we can to manage the changes in the guidance, to get communication out, uh, as quickly as we can while we're still dealing with stacking issues related to absences due COVID, student absences, trying to make decisions on when kids can come back and be under the auspices of the guidelines, manage their, continue learning while they're out, uh, and I don't offer that to, to elicit any sympathy, it's, it's just the reality of how we're trying to manage this crisis. Uh, and I have to say, uh, and I was going to say this, Mr. President, during the celebration of success, I again need shout out to the staff for stepping up and filling in on these classrooms. They're giving up their planning period, sometimes they're giving up their lunch hour, so that we can continue to have classes filled with licensed teachers and the properly-staffed adults in those rooms, so that we haven't had to take a pause, uh, because of 17, 18, 16 people being active. So, I, I, I really want to recognize all of our staff for the amazing work that they're doing to help us manage this. You know, I want to tell you all that the guidance is going to change, uh, and I, and there's a risk that, you know, in the last five minutes, and I say this kind of facetiously, the guidance will change again. But let's all hope that if we continue the mitigation strategies that we've been trying to enact and had, I think, done a pretty good job with, that we will see winter start to flatten out and, and turn down very soon, and we'll be in a better place. But until we get there, um, we're going to continue to work hard, stay in front of the guidance, communicate as quickly as we can, and to make the decisions that we need to, keeping in mind the safety of our students and staff, as I said throughout, uh, obviously, eight letters that I've sent home regarding COVID.
So, we're at public participation. We had, uh, two people join us. Sarah, Ben, if you wanted to sign in to publicly speak, now would be the time to do that. Did you want to say anything?
No. Well, if we could have a private meeting with the board after the meeting.
Uh, well, right now it's in the open session in public. Uh, we will take a break between open and closed. Um, I'd be happy to talk to you then.
Okay.
So, if you want to hang out a little bit?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure, no problem. All right, that'll conclude our public participation for tonight. Uh, presentation you'll see on your agenda, there are no presentations tonight. Uh, administrative reports. Mr. Bren?
Uh, I, I pretty much gave my report. The rest of the comments that I need to make, I'll make during the agenda either.
Okay, very good. Assistant Superintendent, Mrs. Chudus?
Thank you. Um, my report is within the agenda as well.
Okay, next, Mr. Nord, Special Ed reports?
Yeah, I have a couple of things coming over. One thing you're talking about, Mr. Kirk, was talking about 17 of our staff members committing, we've been able to staff the building. We also have multiple partner therapeutic days schools where students who we don't have the necessarily skill with enough, don't have the facilities to meet the needs of these students. Three of our partners have taken an adaptive pause. Most of them are back in school today, or they extended out on a break, but I want to make the board aware that, that they switched to remote. These are students who are Norwich students, uh, within our district, but they receive their education at other schools, you know, that we partner. Another thing I also wanted to recognize is, at age 14 and a half, I lost students, with exceptionalities, needed to be included in their IUP meetings. Bridgewood High School has, they invite the students to all of their meetings, and in grade or transition meetings, we do that. And so, one of our goals, okay, happens here as a team, is to, uh, develop plans to make sure that their student participation is needed, especially in grade, are developmentally and socially appropriate and beneficial for everybody. And I really want to recognize, so they should guard and Marley Jennings for their work on this. Uh, they're a special education teacher at Giles and a speech and language pathologist at both Lee and Giles. And they've really just kind of developed a plan on how to actively and sort of include our students in their meetings, especially when we're transitioning to, um, to Bridgewood High School. And then, right now, we're really in the plan, while we're still supporting our plan for this year, we're really starting to think heavily about how to support our students and what they need for next year. And so, that's a big part of what's working that is going on in the special education department. So, thank you.
More anything? Okay, Mr. Nord, thank you much. Uh, building reports, building monthly reports. We'll start with Dr. Ragnola here as we speak.
Hi, thank you. Uh, as we, uh, share our reports today, we wanted to, uh, just rotate a little bit back and forth here as we, uh, start this off, because it'll be some things that are district-wide, and as opposed to repeating ourselves, we thought, uh, try to consolidate that might be, uh, a better way to handle this. So, uh, one of the things that we are, uh, working on right now is completing our MAP testing for EOLA and MAP at both Lee and Giles for our winter session.
And as you heard from Village Trustee Avino, uh, we recently, at the last PTA meeting, we had to talk about the Kindness Day in Norwich, which again, April 23rd. The PTA Giles and Lee Schools will be working with the village to help, uh, to raise awareness, uh, within the community and within both of our schools.
Uh, in addition to that, uh, we have, uh, plans for, uh, Kindness Week, January 24th to the 28th. That's in line with the Great Kindness Challenge. So, you'll be, uh, seeing some information coming down soon about that. That's both at Lee and Giles.
And in conjunction with the Illinois Special Olympics, they have both Lee and Giles, and we'll be holding a Respect Week, the week of February 28th through March, uh, 4th.
Right, and, uh, we have been working on our school improvement plans at both buildings. Last week, we completed a data walk to review our, uh, our, uh, our data, and we are working with our building leadership teams to focus on identifying areas of focus and also developing goals and strategies and creating an action plan, uh, which we are, you know, still continuing to work on. Just wanted to, uh, provide an, an update on that process for you.
And parent-teacher conferences and student-led conferences will be coming up in the month of February. We'll be communicating out additional information and signup information as we get closer. Uh, moving on to Giles', you want to, Giles-specific stuff. Uh, Wednesday, January 19th is our eighth grade graduation retake, so that's tomorrow. Graduation picture retakes. Um, January 24th, which is next Monday, is our sem-, our semester two begins. Uh, that means that seventh and eighth grade will, will no longer have STEAM and they'll move to arts, and our fifth and sixth graders will no longer have arts and they'll move to STEAM. So, that begins next week. We are in our final week of boys' basketball. Our, uh, we have a home game today versus Pennoyer, and Thursday, our boys will be traveling to Lincoln, uh, for the final regular season game. Uh, the tournament does start next week. Uh, the two first, the two games will be at the higher seeded quarterfinal site, so we won't know until the, the conference releases the brackets. It will be home or away, uh, but the, uh, semis and the championship game will be held at Elm School. Uh, so we're excited for that. And then, finally, girls' basketball and its elastic ball signups are occurring, and trials will be happening soon.
All right, Natalie, our Battle of the Books is, uh, in full swing. Mrs. Jolieti is working with 43 fourth graders who signed up for Battle of the Books this year. We were really excited to see such a, uh, a large interest this year in Battle of the Books. And, uh, we also had a group of teachers that worked on preparing, uh, cool tools a couple of weeks ago, which are lessons to reteach and reinforce, uh, expectations in common areas that we call hotspots. Um, this past week, we, you know, for instance, we noticed, um, you know, behaviors in the bathroom that aren't, uh, up to our expectations, so that's a way to bring in a cool tool to, uh, reteach and reinforce the, uh, expectations and, uh, make sure that everyone is on the same page and also have a, a common language. So, um, and we'll continue to share these out in, uh, in a proactive manner for other hotspots like playground, hallways, and other common areas.
Okay, Ford, have any questions? Okay, Tom, thank you. This is my reports. We'll start with this, Mize up?
Thank you. Um, I'm happy to report, we have no suspensions to report from Lee School and continue to use our referral system to help, um, reinforce the expectations with our students who are not meeting expectations, but no suspensions to report today.
Okay, you want to, Giles, Miss Erin?
I have five in-school suspensions to report this month. Five, all five are violation of board policy 7:199, engaging in hazing or any kind of bullying or aggressive behavior that causes total psychological harm to a staff person or another student, or urging other students to engage in such conduct. Prohibited conduct specifically includes, without limitation, any use of violence, intimidation, force, noise, coercion, threats, stalking, harassment, sexual harassment, public humiliation, theft or destruction of property, retaliation, hazing, bullying, bullying using a school computer or a school computer network, or other comparable conduct. And one was also both in violation of board policy 7:199, but additionally 21, which states, "Engaging in any activity on or off campus that interferes with, disrupts, or adversely affects the school environment, school operations, or an educational function, including but not limited to, conduct that may be reasonably be considered to, A, be a threat or an attempt to intimidation of a staff member, or B, endanger the health or safety of students, staff, or school properties."
Okay, ladies, thank you very much. Office staffing report, Mrs. Chudus?
Uh, thank you. Uh, today, January 19th, A through E, you'll see some staffing that we are asking the board to approve tonight, uh, that we spoke about all of these positions last month. The two additional, uh, paraprofessionals are due to, uh, IP, uh, notifications. Do you have any questions regarding this staffing?
Board?
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Uh, board committees, board policy development, uh, they'll, yeah, there's some policy updates that we're going to approve tonight. You'll see it on, uh, on your agenda, under 15, A, or the action item. We'll get that for a bit. So, that's, we're ready for policy development. Building invites?
Uh, I don't have anything besides a spoke to that crossing. We told you that the STEAM labs are done. It was a little bit of work, but by the time I spoke, they're done. Uh, as I understand, the plan is being put together, to be put in use, but, um, I'm guessing that it's being completed up and running, so if, if great, you can start using them. Uh, I don't see what, I mean, proving it up. I do know that NSTF is waiting for their list of equipment to purchase. I know that a comprehensive list has been waited out, but, uh, I would hope we can work out some sort of list that's preliminary, like we, basically, the same, we at least know we want this, and a secondary list is coming, because the more we need time, shipping time, um, given to purchase these things, the better. Otherwise, purchases may, you have two months of waiting for them to actually get here, and then it's just great to not get to use the STEAM labs much either. So, uh, that's all I really have, is just looking for those STEAM labs to get up and running.
Anything for you, Jesus? Okay, Frank, thank you. Communications?
Nothing to report.
Bylaws?
No update.
Negotiations, we already negotiated here. Myself, Renzo, Frank, I'm committed. We will be attending, uh, interest-based partnering, training in March. I don't know the date, I know it's set, so it's due beyond the date, but that's coming up for us in a couple of months here. Other than that, there's nothing to report. Uh, education, parent-teacher advisory, behavioral intervention, ad hoc, nobody's met on those, so nothing to report. Norwich Park, this is her.
I personally don't have anything to report, but it looks like in discussion items, there's some type of update regarding their programs that shall go. I'm assuming we'll touch on it.
So, yeah, there'll be a little Norwich Park update, uh, that will go around here, we need consent agenda. I'd ask the board to consider the approval of the consent agenda. A discussion on the board's end. All right, now, you have any discussion? Now, as for that, you do? Lou, I asked for the lotions are approved, we can send them here. Lou, second of February. Sarah, who called please?
Mr. Mazan?
Yeah.
Mrs. Law? Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Burri?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck? Yes. Mr. Colas?
Yes.
Mr. Monson?
Yes.
Moving on to our action. I don't, I guess the- Moving on to our action, I, I asked the board to consider the approval of the adoption of the following board policy updates on second grade, two colon one one zero, school, uh, school board qualifications, terms, and duties of board officers, two colon one five zero, school board committees, two colon two two zero, school board, school board meeting procedure, three colon five zero, uh, general school administration, administrative personnel, other than the superintendent, five colon one eight five, general personnel and medical leave, five colon two zero zero, general personnel terms and conditions of employment and dismissal, five colon two five zero, professional personnel, duties of access, five colon three three zero, educational support personnel, sit days, vacation, holidays, and leaves, six colon two zero, construction, school year calendar, any discussion. Okay, I'll ask the board for a motion to approve and adopt the following board policies as I just mentioned, not reading them again.
Motion.
Motion by Frank, second of my, mom. Uh, Sarah, what's up, please?
Mrs. Chudusia?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mrs. Lala?
Yes.
Mr. Blas?
Yes.
Mr. Mazana?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Okay, so I need to, uh, just update you on policies, okay? Uh, you're all aware, you can see the notebook that you were given last month, uh, and included in that notebook are the seventy, uh, policies that are up for revision and one new policy. We're going to have, uh, preliminary discussion on two of the more significant, important policies of this evening, um, but for the rest of the policies, Michelle and I, with the help of the Press Policy Service, have, have broken those policies down into nine different categories. So we're not going to take the policies en masse, we're not going to ask you to serve on a policy committee because no one volunteered to do that. So I will prepare a memo such as this one for you each month, uh, we'll take, tonight represents two of the nine sections, there are seven left, uh, I'll probably give you three sections next month. Um, I am strongly, strongly suggesting that you need these and you have an appreciation for what's in there because these policies are yours, they're not mine, and they guide the work that I do, that Michelle does, that administrators do, it's pretty significant that you are, uh, aware of these proposed changes, and I will try and spell them out for you, um, to, to kind of help move things along, but that's how we intend to go through this massive packet of proposed provisions, and hopefully that meets with your approval. If somebody's just really dying to meet and, and order these in detail, uh, with Mrs. Busick and I, we would certainly come to be a fan of course. Thank you, Rob. I asked the board to consider the approval of the contract with West Ford for V C B A Services. Discussion?
Okay, yeah. Um, the contract's not in your package, so do we know, uh, the place is not in mine? Is it in the board book?
It's in the board book.
Yes, it's not in mine, yeah, okay.
It's in board book, this is a second contract we previously had asked you to approve, uh, a couple of months ago, for, this is a V C B A, is a board certified behavior analyst who's working with our staff, basically PD, uh, for our staff, for students, um, with behavior needs. This is a continuation of services. It is as our funded, as our two funded.
It's in the board book, it's put in our, uh, talk, okay, so we recommend that you approve this contract. I'll ask for a motion to approve the contract with West Ford for V C B A Services.
Motion.
Second. Frank, second of my, Lorenzo. Sarah, what's up, please?
Mrs. Chudusia?
Yes.
Mr. Berg?
Yes.
Mr. Mazana?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Monson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lala?
Yes.
Motion carries. We'll, we'll move on to our discussion items for today. Okay? All right, so over to Mr. Frank. All right, we have several items to add for discussion, uh, some of these things we will move back to for action next month. The first, sixteen A is, is, is planning activities that we talked about having on February four and five, uh, twenty-twenty-two. So in your packet I gave you a copy of the memo that I first gave you, I believe in, either November or December, with just an update, um, we're at a point where we need to, uh, I think confirm that the board still wants to go through this activity, uh, on the fourth and the fifth, and then if that is in fact the case, um, I think I would like, well, I want some direction from the board on, um, who should participate, I listed some potential, um, stakeholder groups that, uh, have traditionally participated in this type of activity, uh, on behalf of the board of the district, uh, and then, and I agree, um, just getting some direction from you, normally what I would do in this kind of setting would be to quickly review the district vision and ambition statement, mission and vision statement, and then conduct a little follow-up analysis, which really identifies our strengths, our weaknesses, our opportunities, and our threats. That would then lead to, uh, formation of three to five goals or objectives, uh, that become the foundation of the, of the plan, and then we would start to identify, uh, action steps and timelines to complete those action steps. So this is a, a fairly involved process, uh, and I just, first of all, I want to make sure that, um, at this point in time, because it's been a while since we've talked about this, it just feels something that you want to try and do, uh, the first, Frank, it said it in the paper. So for me, I think it's something that we should do, I'd like to make up here, I'm reading the memo, uh, the email, uh, that, you know, just, that's a bad weekend for me, I can't do that weekend, uh, so if we can find some other dates that work for the board, uh, I'm all for it, it's just the weekend's better, better weekend. Anyone else?
I'm good, I'm good, whatever dates are good, I'll make it happen.
We find that, that works, I don't think it's, uh, we're going to get to it.
And the only other thing I would say, as far as the community, uh, I see the numbers on that, I would just try to get it out, uh, to the community as best as we can, um, and I'm, I'm, is that, is that including, uh, I see, how would we get that out, do we know, is that, is that an email? Well, what I'd like to do is ask you to recommend people within those categories, and then we would send a letter of invitation to them and ask them to participate. Got you, okay. Well, it sounds to me, it sounds to me.
Yeah, I agree with the process, but figuring out a date would be the next, but I agree with the process and, and should be done.
Perhaps, uh, an email that talks about respective dates, and in each person's reply, they could suggest who among these groups that feel with representative, or should be, basically should be invited or considered.
So I'm going to look at my team and ask, does anybody know how to do a Google poll? Anybody familiar with that?
Yes.
All right, so we'll, we'll send out what they call a Google poll, we're going to list some dates, communicate your availability, um, I, I think we'll have the opportunity to ask them to recommend people as part of that, if not, we'll do that in a separate email. I, I'm, I'm fine changing the date, um, but I need to say that the farther we go in the fifth of our, and when we get into March, the dates are going to be really hard to come by. So, um, we'll get this out, and we may have to, we may have to make a decision about whether we wait until all seven of you can be available, or we pick the best date with the most people that are available and, and go from there. So we're thinking seven, starting to do it before the end of February, right, and we're starting to figure out what dates work. Yeah, I think that is the best, because it is, you know, we start, when it starts to warm up, hopefully, in March, you know, people are going to be, and, and we understand that, you know, please don't take that as a criticism, it's just people are going to start to look for other things. So we'll try and get that out, Sean, if you can help me with that, I would appreciate it, the date, um, and then, uh, it'll come to you in the email and just fill it out, and then we'll look at it and we'll, we'll put out a couple of dates that appear to be the most workable. Okay? Does the, uh, structure that I laid out, the quick look at the vision, and mission and vision statement, and then the looking at our strengths and so on, does that make sense, is that what you envision when we talk about, for your planning?
Yes.
Okay. All right, very good, and we will proceed along. The, uh, update on the traffic study, uh, I put a note in your packet, so there's a couple of things that I wanted to emphasize here, last month we had a pretty big conversation, uh, regarding the awesome of the, uh, lead, uh, traffic study that the village has in our path. Uh, from that meeting, uh, came some, uh, ideas from some folks who spoke, uh, and so what I tried to do by way of this memo is, is update you on some of the steps that we've taken since the December meeting. We have had a follow-up meeting with the village, uh, and we have another one scheduled, uh, for, um, February eighth, I want to say?
February.
February eighth. Uh, so we are, uh, looking at, uh, very possibly taking the asphalt area that runs in front of this building, uh, is that east and west or north and south?
North and south.
North and south, and perhaps, uh, putting some permanent parking spaces there, uh, the village is looking at some of their, they're looking at some of their, their ordinances to see if that would be permissible, first of all, then we have to have a conversation, is that something that we want to do, do we want people parking out here, there would have to be some, uh, some guidelines established, timelines, so on and so forth. We are also exploring the idea of possibly adding the, uh, parking spaces to the solid one building that we allow staff to use in the winter, making them more permanent year round. Uh, we have reached out to, uh, the folks over at the shopping center, uh, and we're trying to find out who we would have to talk to about maybe utilizing or leasing some of those parking spaces, uh, uh, that run next to the bank and parallel to Lawrence. Uh, we have asked, uh, our district architect to provide us some preliminary figures about taking some of the greedy space, uh, on the north end of the, uh, building, uh, and converting those into, uh, additional parking spaces to alleviate some of the parking issues, uh, that were mentioned at last month's meeting. So I've given to you at your seat, because we got this information, uh, yesterday morning, and I, the first chance I had to look at it was this morning, you have a note from our district architect, Ellen Armbruck, you have a, uh, picture of the current parking lot that sits next to the field, and then you have three, uh, rather basic drawings labeled A, B, and C, that talk about, uh, the addition of possibly, uh, twelve additional spaces, a net addition of thirty-five additional spaces, and then possibly, possibly adding as many as forty-one additional spaces by taking that parking, that additional parking lot concept and, and turning it around, um, and running, uh, east and west instead of north and south. And so if you look at the letter that our architect sent, he has given some very preliminary, you know, cost estimates for each one of those options, so option A, which corresponds to picture A, he's estimating the cost to be one hundred and thirty thousand to one hundred and sixty thousand dollars, for option B, the addition, the cost would be somewhere between two hundred and ten thousand and two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and for option C, the anticipated cost would range from two hundred and sixty thousand to two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Now, I want to caution you about receiving any estimate for cost from an architect. In January, for work that may not start until June or July, uh, this is just for our discussion tonight, I, I have no idea what these costs could actually come in, if they would be bid, uh, five months, four months, and that. So we present this to you as an option, um, this will alleviate, to a certain extent, one of the two problems that I believe were mentioned and talked about at the December meeting, the other being the traffic flow, uh, that occurs, uh, and, and causes some difficulty for our neighbors, uh, in the morning and in the afternoon, and frankly, I'm, I'm not sure that there's a, a workable solution, uh, with regard to that, with regard to the traffic flow. I think we have more of an opportunity to deal with the parking, the off-street or on-street parking problem, and freeing up some spaces, uh, by looking at, at these options. We're not committed, we asked the architect to spend very little time on this, uh, and I think he, he did what I asked him to, this was just to provide you with some rough estimates tonight to see if you want us to go forward, to pursue this as an option, uh, or, uh, to really, uh, get some direction from you, not just on this option, but the other things that we suggested to you this evening, to deal with the parking machine.
We've, we've got some time to look at this, so.
Yeah, we're not asking you for any, any direction tonight, uh, do you want this to be brought back to in February, either as a discussion item, or?
Yes.
So we'll bring it back and we'll have a more robust discussion on, not just what we've given you from the architect, but the other things that we've talked about.
Do that?
Yes. We can certainly do that, and, uh, in the meantime, as you, as you continue to look at these, uh, items, please, uh, please let Mrs. Busick or me know if you have any questions, uh, or are you concerned about what came to your desk?
So I have a question, sorry.
Sure, go ahead.
So option C says, in parentheses, not parking or fence, what does that mean?
So, um, here we're talking about, this is along Lawrence Avenue, so that, that price does not include what, the fence.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
All of them don't have.
And that's two in all of them.
Just as long as, and then that one says, that's not parking, so I'm going to try and destroy it, okay?
Good question, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, I want to talk about, uh, sixteen C and D together, and tonight this is really just an introduction of these two, uh, policies, uh, six colon sixty is a revision to, uh, the curricular units of study that we're required to offer our students. Uh, that particular revision, uh, is quite lengthy and has some, uh, topics in it that may be controversial. One of those curricular issues revolves around the. One of those curricular issues revolves around the teaching of the National Sex Ed Standards. I do have a printed copy of those for anyone who would like to look at those. There are some options that we have relative to the teaching of the new or revised, or revised, National Sex Ed Standards. And so I want to bring these two policies back to you next month for a more detailed conversation. There are some other changes that are included in six colon sixty that we will point out to you, and we will, in all likelihood, have a series of questions that we need you to, to answer, and I will send those out to you in advance in the board's book so that we can take a look at those and we can begin to discuss those. And hopefully, if you're ready then, approve these two policies in March. The second policy is four point one six five, and this is a new, a proposed new policy. And this is under the heading of Operational Services: Awareness and Prevention of Child Sexual Abuse and Grooming Behaviors. Again, this is a, a policy that while it's, I believe is, is good in its intent, it really is going to be a matter of how the policy is interpreted in terms of educator behavior. I think it's fair to say, and I want the children to jump in if I go too far astray here, that things that we have done previously, because we deeply care for children and there will be, like providing a meal or providing a coat in the wintertime or shoes, now under certain circumstances would be considered grooming, and that would be illegal. And so we're going to have to figure out how we handle this type of and do it so that someone doesn't inadvertently find themselves in, in trouble. There are also several training requirements that we will bring to you in terms of how we intend to meet those requirements. The deadline for those training requirements is January 31st of every year. We have begun to look into a couple of options to meet this requirement, and I'm going to have a follow-up conversation with Mr. Dorr, who's leading this particular piece for me, on how we can meet some of these training requirements. I don't mind saying, you know, in a recorded meeting, when it's being broadcast, this particular policy, in my mind, steps over the limit and it's going to be particularly onerous to, to enforce. But be that as it may, it is, it is statute, it's law, and we have to, we have to have a policy that reflects that. So with that said, you have copies of both policies in that massive notebook. So if you, if you can, please look at the policies in the notebook. If you need another copy for whatever reason, let me know and we'll make sure that you get those. Michelle, anything more to add?
So I did have a conversation with Mr. Dorr today, and it is, at this point, we believe we're covering that under Aaron's Law for staff, but we're, we're researching that further to make sure that we have everything covered in it for the grooming for staff.
As you mentioned for both policies.
Correct.
Four one six five, yes.
Four, four point one six five.
So any other questions? Board?
No.
Okay, please take a look at those, and we will try and guide you through some of the decision-making that needs to happen with regard to those these next, the next month. All right, thank you, Vernon. Mrs. Tuzi is going to talk to you about sixteen E.
Last month, I was speaking to you about our e-learning plans for District Dade, for Lee School and Giles School. In December of 2020, I'm sorry, 2019, these plans were approved by West Forty. If you recall, this was before we even started the pandemic. So the e-learning plans are just for an emergency day, snow, cold, can also now be extended if, for example, we didn't have enough staff in the building to staff the building. I have attached the Lee and the Giles' proposed e-learning update plans because when we first had them, when the board first approved them in December of 2019, that was before we were one-to-one with technology. Now we've come a very long way since December of 2019, so we are asking the board to update these plans. Part of updating the plans is required to have a, a public display, a public hearing for the plans. We would like to do that next month in, in cooperation with our next month meeting.
We will be asking you to approve that curriculum.
Any questions about our e-learning plans? Just want to thank the Lee School staff, the Giles School staff, for putting them together so quickly to provide for robust education on days that we are remote. Michelle, can you keep going? Sixteen F.
Yeah, she gets the next one, yeah.
Sixteen F is our proposed SO3 grant. SO3 does require us to put on our plans for SO3 on a public display, which we also would like to do next month during the next month's board meetings. Basically, what we have, what I've outlined for you on this memo are the areas that are, are areas of focus for our SO3 grants. We have not submitted it yet to indeed, but these are the areas that we're looking at, applying some of the $1.084 million to these areas. We'll have our details next month for you to put on display for the public display. These areas were in combination with our district leadership committee, we're about to discuss our SO2 funds and then also our SO3 funds. Sixteen G is actually a presentation regarding preschool and kindergarten fees. I am bringing you this month a proposed preschool and kindergarten fees for 22, 23. I have this ready to present, would you like me to present it?
Are you bringing it to us next month?
Yes.
You're going to present then, or no?
I can do, I can, if you would.
It's in the board book right now.
It is.
Unless the board will let you present. You're going to touch on it next month, too?
Correct, I'm going to ask you for approval of the tuition for preschool and the tuition for kindergarten, as well as the fees for preschool and kindergarten, so that we can start, we see on slide, um, six, I'm sorry, slide seven, those are the proposed residency and registration timelines. So I'd like to begin that in, right after the board meeting in February.
The question, my name is Michelle, is, so I would ask on behalf of the community, has the fees changed from this year to next year? Have they changed in any way?
I am not proposing that the fees change.
Yeah, okay. So then I, I think it would be okay if you presented it next month, the fees are the same but not increasing, and we're okay with that? Plus, it's in the board book for review right now, so it's not like we're going to present something to the public next week with an increase that nobody knew about.
I am not.
Yes, okay.
No, I am projecting the fees and the curricular fees, the tuition fees and curricular fees to stay the same, which will be our fourth year in the row of keeping them the same. Actually, I'm sorry, let me clarify that, kindergarten fees actually were cut this year, not tuition, but fees. My next, I am presenting to you is the enrollment projections. As we discussed last month, I'm providing you, every January, we'll provide you with five years of enrollment and then a projection of what that next year looks like. So I've projected 22, 23. As you can see, from the six years here, the one-year projection, pretty stable are numbers. I am projecting us right now to be at 1,070 students. This year, we're at 1,073 students. There is a smaller amount in the class going down in kindergarten, down the average. This year, we have 107, I'm projecting 100 kindergartners for next year. Next month, as I outlined in the memo, I will bring you what our staffing plan, not individual teachers, but just what staff we are, the number of staff we are proposing for the 22, 23 school. If there are any additional staff, we'll bring that to you as well.
So this is something that I suggested to Mrs. Tuzi, that she presents to you every year again. There is a, there is a very basic methodology for our projection is for the upcoming year. There are some very basic assumptions that are made, but this really isn't planning for. And the reason I'm suggesting you look at this as annual, uh, every year is because knowing how many students that we're planning for helps you make decisions on recommendations that we will be making based on the programming that we need to have based on those enrollment projections. So there's, you know, there's a number of kinds of what we're going to be asking you to do. And in every district, the planning for the next school year begins in January of the current school year. Okay? Because we will be making decisions about staffing. Next month, we will be asking you for permission to begin working on the FY23 district budget. And that will lead into eventually work on our grants that will be coming out for renewal, revision for FY23. So this is the time when you start now, turn our attention to planning for the next school year, while we're still living in the current school, right? I think you all get that, you all understand. So it's, it's amazing that we're already here at this point, it seems like school just started, literally a day or two ago. But you will see some things over the next couple of months that are in our planning for making.
You want me to talk about the calendar? Mr. Graham, would you like me to talk about the calendar?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. We began two months ago with our district leadership committee to look at the current calendar that we have right now, to look at Ridgewood's calendar, we also have Penoyer's calendar, and start to draft, a first draft of what our 22, 23 calendar would like. Obviously, we want to get this finished as quickly as possible so our families can plan ahead for next year and plan for vacations and such. We do have, so the calendar is comprised of 185 days, 176 student attendance days, four days of teacher institute days, and then five emergency days that need to be identified on the calendar. When the year ends, when you submit your final calendar to the Illinois School Board of Education, you then define just 180 days if you don't use any of the emergency days. So we're just sharing with you today, a first draft, we have not completed this yet, but it's the first draft of what the district leadership committee has come up with. They have actually split up into, into teams and worked month by month, looking at the planning of the holidays, the ones we're required to take off, the additional ones to start of the year, winter break, spring break, and trying to build our calendar that works best for us here at District Dade. Again, we're not completed with it yet, we do expect to, we're hoping to come to you next month with the final product for approval so we can get that out to our families.
Are we looking at Ridgewood's spring break?
Ridgewood's spring break is in line with the spring breaks.
Correct.
The one thing I will point out at this point is that winter breaks are not in line. Ridgewood is going until the 16th and then going back January 2nd. Right now, we're looking at some options of going midweek and midweek, or perhaps going later, all the way till the 22nd of, of December, and then going, coming back a little later in January. We haven't defined anything yet, the 16th just seems very early for us, and coming back January 2nd just seems very early for us. We're afraid our students will still be sleeping. So the things were swarmed, but the spring breaks are in line. Beginning of the year right now is basically in line. We're not finalized on our beginning date at this point. We do, as Mr. Tuzi was mentioning, or had mentioned, the B and G, we're still looking at some projects, the summer that we're going to be completing and when those will be completed is when we start our year, if we have to push back a little. I will know more about that next month.
And then I see, you came out for updates at the beginning, are we looking to do that again?
We are exploring that again, yes, to see if that was beneficial or not. Yes. We have not finalized that though, so if you, if we give some input if not, I'm certainly happy to have a discussion about that, at least some input.
So it goes without saying, because I've done this for a hundred years, you cannot put together a calendar that makes everybody happy. I know you have a lot of absolutes to mind out, but I can just about absolutely tell you, there's no calendar you can put out that makes everybody happy. So we try and do what we think is best for our students and our staff, recognizing that there may be a need to try and align some of our neighbors, but we do the best that we can, and that's what will be reflected when we bring you your calendar next month for approval.
Any questions? Then go on to sixteen J. This is an update about the Norris Parkship enrichment program. Mr. Graham and I met with Evan Clayton and Avery Clarity again last week, and attached to your board packet is their plan for the enrichment program. We haven't come up with a name for it yet, so we are still working on that to come up with a, a name for it that, that describes everything that's involved in it. But at this point, we are looking at 10 courses that would start a little bit towards the end of February, because we would be asking the board for approval next month in this point. This would allow our students, and primarily, primarily at this point, they are looking at Lee, although we have asked them to look at some Giles options also, and we do have another meeting set with them the first week of February, sorry, second week of February. So we will have a final option to bring to you next month.
Was that the last part about many of Giles?
Right, now, this program has just turned towards Lee. We have asked them to consider some Giles options as well.
And I'm going to bring this up, this up in our agenda meeting. There's 10, 10, 10 courses, activities after school, right?
Correct.
Where they going to be held at?
In this project that you have in front of you, they are all Lee projects, so either the gym.
Yeah, okay.
It depends on what, what it is. If it's a, an activity that would require the gym, they'll be in the gym, like gym runs.
But it'll, it'll be here at Lee?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
So it'll be, it'll be structured to where school day ends. If you're signed up for these, you would go down to the gym, or you'd go room here and participate at the appropriate time.
Correct. So what we're talking about is the day ends at three times, the students would go to a central place, maybe the lunch room, have a snack. a central place, maybe the lunchroom, have a snack first, and then go off to their class from 3:30 to 4:30. They have been speaking with some of our staff members, because if you recall, we had reached out to the staff, spoke, had a conversation with NEET about some of our staff members running some of the classes, that now that it's out of our hands, the Park District is running it, then the Park District is hiring people, the Park District is handling all of that.
So if I'm a parent when this comes out, then I want to sign my son or my daughter up for one of these, how much does it cost them?
They have not put on a budget with us yet. We are looking at subsidizing it through SO3 funds through District Dadee, but we're right now waiting for them to come up with their budget, they didn't have a budget when they met with us, and then a discussion of if there's a nominal cost. For example, with summer school, how we had people pay something for the, for summer school, in our program, we refunded $80 if you recall, if they attended 80%. In the Norwood Park program that was running at the Park District, the fee was $100 and families only had to pay $25 because Norwood Park paid $75. So we're kind of looking at both of those options to see what would be best for us, and we will need an intergovernmental agreement with the Norris Park District next month.
Do you expect, are the expectations for Norris Park to have those figures for us?
Correct, when we meet with them next.
Yes.
Did they have to give me why they're planning, they don't have plans for students of fifth grade, grade?
So at first, they, there was some confusion, I'm going to be honest with you, they thought that we were up to fifth grade here, so they thought they were kind of hitting that fourth, fifth grade, middle school chunk of kids, and they were aware they weren't hitting sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. Once we clarified that, you know, we do want some options for that middle chunk of kids too, they said they need to go back and look at it. However, remember when we did present this to them, it was a piloted first to start off a little bit on the smaller side in order to grow into something much larger. They're really looking at this becoming a major opportunity for our students, which we are as well. We want this program to start off now and really be something that grows so much more in the future, even after there are funds from our SO3 dollars that are no longer available. We still want families to be involved in these programs. So they're looking at the long run of this and kind of starting off on the smaller side. However, we did ask them to look at some programs or jobs.
I think it's kind of a complex timeframe if we're going to find out about, you know, what the plans are in the middle of February and then they want to start at the end of February and then, you know, they want to take a look and say, hey, you're not in enough interest, whether you do it or not. To me, I would be concerned that they start something and then pull it back because they didn't give us some target number that they thought they could get.
That's a good observation. I think that we're looking at being ready to, they're looking at the 15th is our board meeting and be ready to send it out right away on the 16th, as long as everything is ready to go, and then starting it right away.
And sending it out would be, how, what'd you guys decide on the first again, get out the?
Sure, so we talked with them about taking this information and putting it into like a breathing pamphlet that could be sent out electronically, could be put out to all the different areas in the town as well.
And who is coordinating the handling of whatever fees, nominal or not, who is in charge of collecting all that money and making sure it all?
Yeah, they would be.
Program.
Their program would be. We would need to look at an intergovernmental agreement with them.
Right.
In February, we would bring that to you, and then they would be controlling all of fees, supervision of the students, everything.
That's what we're going to do.
Some great classes here? I'm sorry, I mean, they're.
Well, we're going to ask them to approve next month, is the intergovernmental agreement? We're presenting this to you tonight so that if there's a program that you're not sure of, you would tell us so we can go back to them and tell them if you have concerns about this. One of the things that I took away from our previous conversation about this was that it was the board's strong desire to bring fun back to school, and listening to Clayton and Marie talk about these programs, these are going to be fun. These are things that are going to stretch our students, help them grow, help them learn, and have fun. My position is, as long as the Park District's willing to offer alternatives, we will make it happen financially from our SO3 money so that they don't lose any money to get this started. Because what's exciting to me for District Dadee is the potential of how far this can grow. We want this to become self-sustaining in the next couple of years, and we would like to go out and get community partners to help backfill the grand dollars that are eventually going to run out, and we would replace those dollars so that we make this very affordable for our students and their families with some partnerships in the community. So this is something that I think we're both deeply committed to. There may be some bumps along the way, but, you know, working together with the Park District will figure it out.
And you're exactly right, Ralph, real quick, I'm going to just say again, you just said, this board, one of its goals was to have more options for parents and more opportunities for the students that go here. This is a good jumpstart off the ground here with these 10 classes or activities or courses, and yeah, like, the board's committed using SO3 money to help fund that, to get it moving, and we're in the right direction, it's pretty close. So yeah, exactly right. Anyone else?
And the Park is recommended to, but they hired Helen and Clayton for the purpose of running high racial programs like that.
That's great. Any other board comments in general?
Yeah, I have a quick question. Obviously, we are well aware of the challenges and the social emotional effects of mask wearing for the last three years of our kids. A lot of things I've been reading and I just would like to get your feedback is, especially at the early childhood level of learning, a lot of learning is seeing how words are really pronounced, with mask wearing has become challenging. Have we seen these challenges as well as have we ever considered looking at masks with clear wear that these kids can actually see words being pronounced and helping their brain?
Yeah, the two areas actually that we do have masks that have clear cutouts in them are speech, speech and language, and in our early childhood program, our preschool program. They also do face shields, which can be used with some distance with students if you are working on that articulation and the movement of your mouth in order to make certain sounds. The first round of those masks that came out wasn't, they weren't very good, they fogged up quite quickly, but there have been improvements on that since we first bought them.
Good, good to hear, thank you.
Definitely, I should be the right people to use them.
Thank you.
Any other board comments? Okay. I ask the board to consider a motion to adjourn the closed session to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees in review of closed session minutes. Any discussion on the board's end? I need a motion to adjourn the closed session to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees in review of closed session minutes on comments with high LCS.
Motion.
Louis, second and I, roll call please, sir.
Mr. Mazanu?
Yes.
Mrs. Deck?
Yes.
Mr. Barard?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Trabuzio?
Yes.
All right, motion carries, hold the time, draw the open session at 8:19 AM. I don't want to put a time on it to go into closed, but if you want me to drive it after request, so that concludes. 12 PM, personnel action items. I ask the board to consider the employment of Brandon Del Rio, special ed paraprofessional at Lee School. Discussion. I ask for a motion to approve the appointment of Brandon Del Rio, special ed paraprofessional at Lee School. Motion. Louis and Frank, Louis and Frank, roll call please, sir.
Mr. Mazanu?
Yes.
Mr. Trabuzio?
Yes.
Mrs. Deck?
Yes.
Mr. Barard?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Motion carries. I ask the board to consider the approval of the employment of Oregana Cuchio, special ed paraprofessional at Lee School, effective February 1, 2022. Discussion. The motions are approved, the employment of Oregana Cuchio, special ed paraprofessional at Lee School, effective February 1, 2022.
Motion.
Benzo, second and I, Frank, roll call please.
Mr. Barard?
Yes.
Mr. Trabuzio?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Mazanu?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Motion carries. I ask the board to consider the approval of the change in our rate for Dylan O'Shea increased to $15 per hour. Discussion. Okay, I ask for a motion to approve the change in our rate for Dylan O'Shea increased to $15 per hour. Frank and Louis, roll call please.
Mr. Trabuzio?
Yes.
Mr. Mazanu?
Yes.
Mrs. Deck?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Bird?
Yes.
Carries. Consider the approval of the contract of Derek Sellers, supervisor of buildings, grounds, and maintenance, effective January 18, 2022. Any discussion? I ask for a motion to approve the contract of Derek Sellers, supervisor of buildings, grounds, and maintenance, effective January 18, 2022.
Motion.
Louis, Frank, motion please, roll call please.
Mr. Mazanu?
Yes.
Mr. Trabuzio?
Yes.
Mr. Barard?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mrs. Deck?
Yes.
Mrs. Watson?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Consider the approval of the change in terms of the appointment for Kennedy Moore, administrative assistant for HR and payroll. Discussion. I'll ask for a motion to approve the change in terms of the candidate of Kennedy Moore, administrative assistant for HR and payroll.
A motion.
Second. Renzo, Frank, roll call?
Mr. Bird?
Yes.
Mr. Trabuzio?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mrs. Deck?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Mazanu?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. Board meeting reflection. Need a motion to adjourn meeting at 10:15 PM?
A motion.
Renzo, second and I, all in favor? All right, any more said? All right, meeting is now adjourned at 10:15 PM.